The 2:00 p.m. meeting at 3:03 p.m. And we will now call the Waco City Council meeting to order on January 18th, 2022, to order at 3:03 p.m. All council members are present. And Councilmember Bearfield is present remotely via Zoom today. I invite you to join me for a moment of silence. And yeah, please join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is able to be brought to you. Is anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? No? Thank you. We will now recess the regular session and reconvene to work session with a report from the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and welcome, city council members. I don't have any changes to the agenda today, and I think we only have one organizational update, and it's going to be provided by City Attorney Ritchie.
Mayor, Council, I just want to introduce the newest member of our team, Sarah will stand up. Sarah Raely joined the legal department on January 3rd, so this is her first, I guess her third Monday with the city. Sarah spent over three years in the JAG Corps for the Marines stationed in Japan. After the Marine Corps, she moved back to Waco, and most recently was a co-owner of Waco Paddle Company. In late 2021, Sarah got her MBA, and in fact, when I was doing her reference checks and talking to Sarah, one of her professors thought she should be a future city manager. So Bradley needs to be a little worried. She's serving as the municipal court prosecutor and as the attorney for animal services, code, fire, and police, and so I want to welcome Sarah to our team.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to our country, and thank you for your service to our city. We're glad to have you onboard.
Today on the agenda, Mayor, we have five public hearings, and those will be covered by Clint Peters later in the work session. On resolutions, we have 22, and I'll be highlighting just a few. Resolution 018 approves an amendment to our fiscal year 2022 capital improvements program budget by increasing the program by $6 million to be focused on streets and parks projects. This increase is based on favorable pricing for the city's planned certificates of obligation, which are expected to close in mid-March. In terms of allocation, we have $4.5 million being dedicated to improving streets that are currently classified in poor condition, and the remaining $1.5 million is dedicated to park improvements.
Bradley, or City Manager Ford, thank you so much for highlighting this resolution. I consistently hear from folks that live in Sanger Heights about the traffic on 17th and 18th Streets, so I am thrilled to see that 18th Street will be getting some love in the form of reconstruction, and think this is the perfect time for us to also consider some traffic calming measures along these streets. There are several families with young children, as well as some elderly residents that live alongside these roads, and want to make sure that these roads are both easy to access by bike and by car and for families walking through the neighborhood. So would love to see that in the future.
Thank you. Along those lines, I too was glad to see not only the 17th and 18th Street allocation, I go to church there in Sanger Heights, but for my district, Chapel Road has been kind of the hot corner in a lot of ways of a lot of new residential construction with Callan Village, Park Meadows, Landreth Gardens, and is kind of that central corridor in many ways for the West Waco neighborhood. So seeing that funds are being allocated for design and planning for that street, which hopefully we can get out of poor condition for a capacity expansion, was music to my soul there. So glad to see that, and I know so many will benefit in the long term when that work starts and completes. Thank you. Thank you.
City Manager Ford, thank you for highlighting this. I echo my fellow council members in that traveling those streets, it is going to be a much improved journey for everybody who, you may not live and work in that neighborhood, but you know, by Waco being Waco, you travel and transition through those ways. My appreciation stems for the park improvements dollars that have been set aside. We have made a pivotal and just monumental enhancement to the East Waco corridor with the purchase of the Doris Miller Y Building and its park, and there's so many opportunities that come with that. And the outdoor park improvements that are attached to that just open the possibilities for just an indefinite amount of activities that can be created to enhance our community, both young and old. I can't wait to see what park does. I mean, that's several acres that we have the opportunity to develop and enhance. So you know, yes, those are where the Pee-wee league football team played and the baseball teams and track, but you know, what does that look like with cricket and rugby and all kinds of things, you know? I don't know, senior fencing tournaments? I don't know. But just the fact that there is monies that are set aside to do so and to build and enhance our community and allow our community to have within walking distance somewhere that they can better themselves and advance and enhance their children physically, emotionally, and in any other form is music to my ears, so I appreciate that.
City Manager Ford, I will volunteer if any referees are needed for the city senior fencing tournaments that could go on there, willing to lend any resource or support for that.
You may be the only qualified person in McLennan County, if you really are. All right, noted, noted. Appreciate those comments, council members, and we'll incorporate your comments into the planning work as necessary. I did want to highlight resolutions 20 through 24 as well. These are somewhat related items, related to a set of approvals to continuing the process to establish tax increment fund reinvestment zone number four, and for amendments to existing reinvestment zone number one, both of which are part of our efforts to strategically develop the core of Waco. You will also note an amendment to the contract with Hawes, Hill &amp; Associates is on the agenda. They'll be providing additional consulting services to ensure we're following proper protocol from the local government code, as well as you'll see interlocal agreements with McLennan County and McLennan County Junior College District for reinvestment zone one and four, for which we are very grateful for the continuing partnership from the county and MCC standpoint. We could not be as successful as we are in economic development without those entities. Then my final...
I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, we have several disqualifications on those that you just named. On Resolution 2022-20, 21, and 22, council members Meek, Vorderut, and Palmer are disqualified from those items. And on Resolution 2022, 23, and 24, council members Vorderut and Palmer are disqualified on those two. Thank you.
May I ask a question, Jennifer, on the resolution? I don't have it in front of me, but the number, but the one on approving for the Hispanic Museum using the community center, do I have to not vote on that since I am a member of the Hispanic Museum Executive Board?
In general, council member, if you're an unpaid member of a board...
Unpaid, yes.
Yeah, if you're unpaid, then you don't have a legal disqualification under the Texas Local Government Code, so you're welcome to vote on that if you so choose.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Final resolution, highlight today's Resolution 033, which awards a construction contract to Gibson &amp; Associates for the South 17th Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project in an amount not to exceed $1,273,567. This is a project that got a lot of attention over the last couple of years, and needed repairs were identified by TechDOT in April 2019, and subsequently, only a few months later, there was actually a fire under the bridge, and that's what got a lot of the community's attention. In January 2020, very quickly after the fire, the council approved an engineering contract with CPNY to manage the design and construction of the repair of this project, and so we're excited to bring forth this construction contract. And as we move into construction in particular, we'll be repairing the fire-damaged areas as well as rehabilitating the superstructure of the bridge, the substructure and roadway approaches. We'll be working to communicate with travelers on this bridge because we do anticipate this will be about a year-long construction process, and we'll be communicating about that in the future.
Bradley, number one, thank you from District 2 for fixing the street, but my comment last week, last city council meeting with Baylor about able to get over to South Waco. Hopefully, when we start this rehabilitation, we will coordinate with the rest of the city projects, because then university parks will be closed to us, 4th and 5th Streets as well, and now 17th as well. So how am I going to get home from here? So hopefully, we can coordinate these projects to work. It won't be too much of an inconvenience to me and other folks that are trying to get to South Waco, because now it's hard enough. The only way we can get over there is through 17th and 18th Streets.
We'll come back with a construction, kind of a detailed timeline based on these other projects as well, the ones you identified, 4th and 5th and university parks.
And 12th is closed, completely closed. We can't use it, so this is the only way to get over there. So just reminding you guys that you need to let me get home.
I want you to get home safe and sound and not have to go to the loop to do it.
Yes.
That would be nice. So appreciate your reminder there, and we'll come back with a detailed scenario that lays out how would you get home and how would all the other thousands of residents traverse across I-35. It's one of the downsides to having, you know, a $100 million capital improvement program is there's a lot of things under construction. Yep, we have a lot of construction going, and I celebrate us improving the infrastructure that needs it, but I do think we need to be thoughtful about the timing of it and also communicate the status of those projects well to our constituents who are monitoring this construction. So look forward to that update, too. That's good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you have anything else on the res?
No, sir.
I just wanted to comment on backup to 31, which is Streets Mill and Overlay on Lakewood and Meadowwood over there on Lake Air, which is in my district. And that project was originally a wastewater project. It took a pretty long time to, it was a little bit more there than what we thought. So the citizens there have been communicative, I could say, and also patient on one end and the other. And I'm really happy to see that and very supportive of this. We're adding on a little bit to this one because we are including Mill and Overlay work for the whole street, and the citizens there have been patient with kind of a long project. The original project was just a patch over with wastewater exposure, and because of the heavy equipment there, we have demonstrated some flexibility and responsiveness, hey, we're going to go ahead and fix this thing up. So I appreciate that. In the same vein, 31, 32, 33, and 34, really to kind of echo Mayor Meek's observation about infrastructure here, these are big projects. I mean, add them up, 1.3 million, you know, 1.2 million, 2.2 million, but I think it's demonstrative of our commitment to infrastructure, which I think we'll talk about a little bit in the bond discussion, too. But 32 is Flat Rock Road reconstruction out in my China Spring area of my district, which needs a lot of work, a highly trafficked area, and then the bridge, and then micro-surfacing. The number 34 is micro-surfacing across the entire city. I think that we've been thoughtful about how we've approached this infrastructure and really deferred maintenance issue, and I'm just happy to see these. These are big numbers, but we've got to do them to get Waco up to speed. So again, applaud what we're doing here, keeping these projects tracked. Thanks, Bradley.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may, just a comment on 025, Resolution 025. I want to thank staff for the pictures, even though none of these houses rehabbed are in my district, but I think showing us what the house looked like before and what it looked like after we went in there and helped these residents to fix their homes up. I appreciate those pictures, and I just wanted staff to know that, I appreciate that you did that, too, because a lot of times we just read it and we don't, you know, picture it unless we go out to the homes. And I would have if it had been in my district, but again, it wasn't in my district, but thank you anyway, staff, for these pictures, and thank you for helping these citizens rehab their homes. I know they appreciate it, and the community and the residents and the neighborhood do, too. Thank you.
Strategic utilization of federal dollars that takes our doing the right work to make sure that this gets done well, and so again, echo Councilmember Rodriguez for that. And I think as we see, you know, some of our housing plan get put into place, we're going to see more rehab opportunities like this begin to occur, and it's meaningful to the families that live in these homes, and it's important for us as a city to have good housing stock that is in good shape and preserves our tax base, it keeps our families with a good quality of life. And so I'm looking forward to, I celebrate these and look forward to more to come. All right. Thank you for those comments. On ordinances, we have five on the agenda today. Four of these are first readings. Ordinances 2022, 037, and 038 are first and final readings for our general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2022, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $28 million, and for one or more series of combination tax revenue certificates of obligation in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $116 million. You're going to hear more about each of those during the work session presentation here in a few moments. Excited to bring that report to you. The second set of ordinances, 2022, 039, is a first reading ordinance to amend Chapter 18 personnel. The code of ordinances to increase the number of Grade 1 police officer positions from 215 to 227, and increase the Waco Police Department's total authorized strength from 267 to 279. And finally, ordinance 2022, 040, is a first reading ordinance terminating reinvestment zone number two for tax increment financing effective February 28, 2022. This termination is proposed due to all the project costs being paid, all objectives of TIF 2 being accomplished, and there's no outstanding obligations in respect to the zone, which means that each of the participating entities will no longer be participating in the zone, and once terminated, the remaining fund balance will be distributed to each of those taxing entities on proportional basis, said in layman's terms, they're all getting a late Christmas present from TIF number two. If there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Bradley, on ordinance 039, I just want to say I am so glad and happy to see the increase in our police officers as we are annexing and future development of housing going on in these annexed properties and development that I was getting concerned that, hey, we're stretching our police officers, you know, because it's a long way from here to over yonder and all this and that, but I was glad to see that, and I would be glad to see more if we need to, because the safety of our citizens is first and foremost. So thank you, staff, and congratulations, Chief, for hiring some more police officers.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for working so hard to build up a credible police department. Chief comes to us with, you know, PhD-level expertise and credibility in our community and is working hard to build mutual trust between our community members and our residents. And so I think that that's what's exciting about that, is just the esteem that Chief Victorian brings and her whole police team bring to our community. So thank you to our officers for maintaining that public trust, and excited for this one as well.
Mayor, I can't see if Jennifer is going to give me the side eye, so somebody has to let me know, but in line with what you just said, I'm going to pose it in this question. These extensions, the increase of officers are from the grant that we received, correct?
Yeah.
Or is that in addition to?
No, this is related to the COPS hiring program in 2025.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, you know, and I'm echoing Mayor Meek, and I'm sure all of the sentiments of our council members with just the wonderful work that Chief Victorian has done in all forms in finding new ways to fund our need for new officers as council member, or additional officers, as Councilmember Rodriguez has mentioned, you know, our push to really grow relational policing within our community. And just to stop for a moment to say, you know, we have a wonderful, I mean, the arrest rate that we saw for the open murders recently, I mean, there, Waco is doing some good work. And, you know, I think it's because of the steadfast leadership that we have had...
That's right.
...as Waco and the history that we had, and then enhancing, you know, and pushing forward with those new staff hires under the direction of Chief Victorian has just really taken us to just top-quality policing. So I'm really pleased with the work of the whole police team and look forward to, not looking forward to having them continue to keep us protected and safe, but not that I'm wishing for more crime, but you know what I'm saying, that there'll be more officers to be able to do that, but just to acknowledge that we've got some pretty fantastic policing going on right now. Did Jennifer look at me crazy?
No, you were okay, I think. Yeah, thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay, yay.
I will just round out those comments, too, with, I appreciate the Waco City Police Department and Chief Victorian's leadership and community engagement that you've valued. And I don't think, there's probably not a day that goes by where you're not going to some community, still, you've been here a while, too, so I appreciate your energy there. And a policing team has to be adequately staffed and properly equipped, and I think this gives us the tools to have a good, solid policing department in the city of Waco. And to your point, Councilmember Bearfield, yeah, this is part of, this is federally funded, 75% through the U.S. Department of Justice COPS program.
With a match component.
With, yeah, 75%, 25% match with the 75% for three years, anyway. And I think in a growing city like we have, the timing was right for this deal, and the leadership was right, and the department was right. So yeah, very supportive of this.
Thanks, Bradley. Any other questions on my report? The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022-015 through 2022, 019, and 2022-025 through Resolutions 2022-036. Resolutions 2021, 22, 23, and 24 will be voted on individually, in which council members are disqualified. Are there any other items council would like for me to remove from the consent agenda? If not, then the next item on the agenda are work sessions, 2022, 03 through 05. Mr. City Manager, would you please introduce the first work session?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I will. We're going to have a discussion of planning public hearing items. To start, we've got Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services. He'll be providing us this update. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We do have the five public hearings this evening. The first one is dealing with an alley abandonment in South Waco. This is between James Avenue and Spate, and then 23rd and 24th Streets. This is actually a block where there's 11 different owners, and they got together and were co-applicants to request abandonment of this alley. It's an unbuilt alley, and the neighbors would like to incorporate that into their properties. There is a sewer line that runs through that alley, so the city will need to retain an easement, but other than that, it can be incorporated into the backyards of these residential lots.
Clint, I'm glad you said that. That was my question. Do the residents and folks that signed this petition understand that they are now, they have to take care of that part of the alley, even though I know that alley, I'm familiar with that alley? So I was just going to ask if they understand that they have to keep that part up, their part up of the back of their yard, and the other, that butts up to the other, do they understand that they have to keep that up?
Yes, ma'am, and actually...
And are they going to fence off that?
Yeah, actually, it's already been fenced off, so it's actually brought forward or triggered by a code compliance case where it was determined they had already started fencing off the alley, and so now they're just coming through the formal process for that, so they're aware of that requirement.
Okay.
And all the owners of that block did sign the petition.
Yeah, I saw their names and all, but I was just wondering if they understood that that's what they were going to have to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, picture's looking, so that alleyway is right through here. This is looking from 24th Street down 24th Street, and then on the other side, 23rd. You see, it's already been fenced off there as well. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this. There was no opposition to the public hearing at the public hearing. We do have two conditions, one being the sewer easement be retained for that area of the alley, and that all the applicants will need to provide exhibits and film note descriptions for the quitclaim deeds associated with the abandonment. The next public hearing is a request from Lance and Ashley Kelly at 5601 Oakview Street. This is for an STR Type 1 on a 3.1 acre tractal and single-family house in Mountain View Neighborhood in District 5. Just a reminder, the Type 1 of STR is the type where the owner, it is owner-occupied, and the owner is present at the time of the short-term rental, and that it's only rented out to one group at a time. In this case, you can see this is a rather large, single-family property right in the middle of Mountain View Neighborhood, 3.1 acres. It's pretty close to Mountain View Park and School there. This is all single-family zoning in the area. You have a mix of R1A and R1B zoning, which are both single-family zoning districts. And then here's a map of other permitted STRs in the area. The red ones are STR2s that were approved before the change in the ordinance that removed STR2s from single-family zoning. And then you do have another STR1 not too far away. So we did get some feedback on this one. The green stars are properties that were in favor of the requests, so you had the two closest properties here and then one across the street from it. The blues raised concerns, did not oppose it, but had some concerns about it. And then the red stars represent either notices that were sent back in opposition or people that spoke at the Plan Commission meeting in opposition. The opposition did not trigger the supermajority requirement of council to approve it.
Does that requirement, Clint, just to refresh my memory, you don't necessarily need a petition to trigger that requirement? It can just be express disapproval by those properties?
The ordinance does say it has to be signed.
Has to be a signed petition, and there's not one that would rise to that level in this matter?
Correct. Yeah, and we even looked at it if you even added all the properties that either spoke or submitted written opposition, and it still didn't get to that 20%.
Thank you.
Just because of the large area that the property takes up.
Yeah.
So we were, so signed petition was a little under 10%, and then if you count up all the opposition, it's about 19, so right below the 20%.
Okay, thanks.
So here's the home. It does sit back pretty far off the street, and then there is a little one-bedroom guest quarters cottage behind the house. This would... Uh, this would be where the STR would take place in this home. Uh, here, uh, here's another, uh, survey of it. So you can see the main house here. They have a garage, another outbuilding, and then the proposed rental will be here. And then they own all this other land behind them. Um, so we actually, uh, measured, um, how far this unit would be from some of the other properties and it's at least a hundred and fifty feet, uh, from the nearest property, uh, you know, that is on this side. The Plan Commission did recommend, uh, approval of the request. We did, uh, based on some of the concerns that were raised at the Plan Commission meeting, uh, we are recommending adding another condition, uh, from the Plan Commission's recommendation. Uh, and that would be that, uh, the short-term rental would just be limited to that cottage, that one-bedroom cottage, and it couldn't, couldn't be any other of the outbuildings or, uh, the main house you use for short-term rental use.
Clint, would they be able to come back, um, if they wanted to apply for an amended permit or get a, a different permit, um, at some point? For more outdoor spaces?
To add additional, they, they would have to come back through the special permit.
But that, that would be available to them, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, my understanding, their intent is just to rent out that one.
Perfect.
Do you know the total acreage of that, that lot?
It's three-point-one acres.
Thanks.
And Clint, Holmes over here, the, all the other conditions were standard conditions.
Correct.
The, the extra one about limiting to that one building only was just the only additional.
Okay. Yes, sir. Any other questions on that one?
Not sure.
Okay, so the next public hearing, twelve, is a request from Jed Cole at a property at twelve-twenty-nine Washington Avenue to rezone from C-three, uh, which is our general commercial district, uh, to C-four, which is our downtown commercial district. Uh, and this is a, a, a property in our Downtown Neighborhood Association, District Four. And so this is a, uh, it currently, there's a single-family home on this lot. It's at the corner of Thirteenth and Washington, uh, near the, uh, Columbus Avenue Baptist Church and, uh, St. Mary's Catholic Church. Uh, this is in the mixed-use core, land-use designation in our Comforts of Plan, which is, uh, designed to encourage, uh, kind of high-density, mixed-use, uh, mixed uses, uh, zoning and then, uh, mixed-use type, um, development. Uh, and then you can see, it's a little hard to see, but, uh, the brown is the, the C-four zoning that they're requesting. Uh, more than half of the block is currently C-four and across the street, C-four. And the red is that C-three zoning, which is just a straight commercial zoning. Uh, he, here is the, the home. Uh, it's a large, uh, about four thousand square foot home on the, on the lot. Um, it's a double lot. And then looking down, uh, towards downtown, you can see just up the block, uh, downtown form buildings. Uh, same as going up towards Seventeenth and Eighteenth and then back, uh, towards Austin Avenue. So it is a, uh, has a lot of downtown, uh, in line with downtown, uh, buildings along there. Uh, no opposition on this one and, uh, Plan Commission did recommend approval of it.
Go ahead. My concern on this one is, I was reading on what is approved for C-four and I saw that alcohol sales wa, is one of the uses of C-four. And it being so close to the, uh, St. Mary's and the other, uh, church, are they, are they, uh, far enough, enough to, that, uh, doesn't come into play if, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna, if, if they're gonna have alcohol. I, I mean, I don't know. I'm just wondering if that would affect the schools or the churches around that area? Are the churches and the schools far enough to where that, uh, uh, alcohol, uh, sales come into play?
We, we can check that, but I would say the existing C-three allows all the same alcohol-type uses than the proposed C-four does.
Okay, well, I, I just read on the C-four.
But we can check that and see, there, the, the, um, without checking, I, I wanna, I'm gonna say there's, it would, uh, meet the requirement. Uh, it, the distance requirement, um, doesn't depend on what zoning it is. It's based on the use. And so it's a, it's a, it's measured different based on whether it's a church or a school. Uh, I believe Colum, Colum, Columbus Avenue, uh, has a daycare. So if, if that's the case, it measures from property line to property line. And it's definitely within that distance that would.
Does St. Mary's still have their school or is that closed?
It's closed, yes, I believe so. Uh, but I believe Colum, Columbus Avenue still has their daycare.
Okay, thank you.
In which case, you said that alcohol sales would be prohibited. Based on your assessment, there would not be able to be alcohol sales because it's so proximate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's some, um, there's some exemptions to that, um, based, you know, if it's a restaurant, they're exempted from that. But, uh, it, you couldn't have a bar there. Uh, but I, we can double-check that.
Okay.
Before tonight.
Thanks, Clint.
Uh, then, the next, uh, public hearing is, um, a, another change, uh, from C-three, but in this case, um, to O-two. This is at, uh, five-eighteen and five-twenty-four North Fifth Street. Uh, that is the area between, uh, Waco Drive and Jefferson, uh, coming into downtown. Uh, this is actually, uh, two existing single-family homes, um, on the site. It's in that, it's that same mixed-use core, uh, area, a land-use area that we talked about in the last, uh, case, uh, that's designed to, um, encourage mixed use. Uh, and then in this case, it is that same three, C-three zoning that's just general commercial. It actually does not allow residential uses, so this change would, uh, make the existing single-family homes, uh, bring them into conformance with the zoning. Um, and then here, the, the two homes here. Looking back up Fifth Street towards Waco Drive, uh, and then looking towards downtown and you can see it's a, a mix of uses, residential and, uh, commercial uses.
So Clint, this is one where there, the actual zoning does not match. The, it, it's basically a single-family residence and that is not allowed, but it was probably either legacy'd in or grandfathered in. Is that right?
That, that's right, yeah. Uh, before nineteen eighty-six, uh, we had, uh, what's called cumulative zoning. So if you had commercial zoning, then everything below it was allowed. And, um, in nineteen eighty-six, when they, the, did the major, uh, uh, rewrite of the zoning ordinance, it went more to, um, uh, zoning district, um, based zoning. So you had, you know, your office and your residential and commercial. And you'd have some mixed-use district, but it wasn't automatically, uh, you know, the single-family use wasn't automatically allowed in all the higher zoning districts. So you have some of this area, it, um, especially in the core of the city where you have some of that heavy commercial uses where there's residential, heavy commercial zoning where you have residential uses.
And if you tried to build a single-family home, you would need to change.
That's correct.
The zoning to allow for that and O-two would allow for that.
That's correct. Yeah, O-two is a mixed-use district, uh, that allows everything from office to all kinds of residential uses.
Thanks.
So following up on that, Clint, do we have, are those properties currently being used as residential, single-family homes?
Yeah, yes, they are.
Okay. So if we change this, um, with, how are we zoned right now? Could you per se have, um, a short-term rental in the current zoning?
No, you could not.
But could you with the new zoning?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, which I think is helpful information to us in light of the housing study.
Yeah, the, the, the existing, uh, residential uses can, you know, stay in use. Uh, but any change, any change in the type of residential use would need to have, meet the zoning so that, um, the O-two would allow them to do short-term rental, which is not allowed right now in the commercial zone.
Potentially, we could lose out on housing stock in the core of the city that could then theoretically be transitioned into short-term rentals from single-family residence.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Is that true of both, uh, twenty-two, zero-one-three and twenty-two, zero-one-four?
Uh, let's see.
And that they're both currently occupied as residential there, even though that's not what it's zoned for and these changes would allow for these to theoretically become short-term rental properties?
So, uh, what, and we'll get to one for, um, one-four, that, does allow, uh, STR type three right now. And with the change, it would, uh, it would allow an STR type two and one. So it's just different types of STRs. And what was the other one that you mentioned?
Uh, Thirteen and Fourteen.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, Clint.
Sure. Uh, and no opposition on, on this one. Uh, Plan Commission did recommend approval. Uh, and then the last one, uh, is, is a similar change, but this is at twenty-three, oh, four, Washington. Uh, and this is, uh, to rezone from C-two. So C-two's a little bit different than C-three. It does allow a mix of commercial uses and higher-density residential. So that's the case here where, um, an STR three, which is a multifamily, uh, short-term rental could, could be in the existing zoning. Uh, and they're requesting O-three zoning, which is a mixed-use, lower-intensity zoning. So it's, uh, office uses, uh, limited commercial uses and then low-density residential, so like duplex, single-family. Uh, but that, that's where it would allow the, the STR type two and one, which are single-family residences that are STRs instead of the, uh, multifamily residences. Uh, this is in the Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association, again, another existing single-family house. Uh, this is in that area between, uh, downtown and the, um, residential areas of, um, um, Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association. This block does have a lot of residential in it. Um, but it is a mixed, mixed-use area. Uh, it's in the mixed-use flex, which again is another mixed-use, uh, area, not as intense as the mixed-use core. Again, that transitional area as you work your way, uh, from downtown. Uh, and then zoning, um, you can see that the pinkish color is the C-two zoning, uh, and then the purple's O-three. We've had a lot of, uh, transition over, I'd say, the last ten years towards, uh, going to those mixed-use, uh, districts with the O-threes and O-twos recently, uh, including one, uh, that's on the, on the same block. Uh, so he, so here's the home here, uh, in question, a single-family home. Uh, this would, this change would bring that existing home into compliance with the zoning ordinance. Uh, this is looking back towards, uh, Washington Avenue, towards, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street, Twenty-Sixth Street. You see, uh, uh, quite a bit of single-family, but some apartments and offices as well. And then this is looking back towards downtown, again, a mix of uses. Uh, Plan Commission did recommend this one for approval. We did have, um, one person in opposition and their main concern was the potential for the short-term rentals, uh, with the difference between the C-two and the O-three.
Clint, for this evening's public hearing, uh, could you let us know how many short-term rentals are within a couple of blocks? My concern, just anecdotally, is from Eighteenth and Washington up to Twenty-Fifth. We've seen a ton of properties go from single-family residential into short-term rentals even in the past two, three years. And it feels like we're kind of, there's pressure on both sides pushing out. Uh, so I'd be curious to know how many are in that few-block radius, just even on Washington alone.
You wanna go up from Eighteenth to Twenty-Fifth or just closer?
Twenty-Fifth on Washington.
Okay, we can do that.
Clint, if you don't mind too, can you break it down, Austin, Washington and Columbus? Do you mind?
Sure.
Thanks. You mind, Kelly?
No, that's great. I, I don't feel like there's as many on Austin, but I think for sure that radius on Columbus and Washington has seen a ton of change.
We can get that to you for a minute. And that's all we have.
Great. Thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor. Mayor and Council, our second work session is work session two-zero-zero, or two-zero-two-two, zero-zero-four, which is a discussion of the proposed issuance and sale of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation and general obligation refunding bonds. I'm glad to introduce, uh, Janice Andrews, our Chief Financial Officer, as well as Drew Masterson, our city's financial advisor of Masterson and Associates, as well as Bond Counsel Glenn Opal of Bracewell, who will discuss the status of the proposed issuance, um, our methodology, as well as related issues. We just really wanna appreciate today the diligence of the team, hard work of the team that's at the table. Also, the many city staff that put in effort on this item each year. And I wanna have a particular note of thanks to, uh, Janice Andrews because this, uh, is gonna be her last sale before her retirement. And she has just done a, an amazing job in this organization, leading us, uh, financially. And so I'll turn it over, uh, Janice, to you for the introduction.
Thank you very much, Bradley. I appreciate that. We're very pleased to have Drew and Glenn here today. Uh, they both assist us greatly in these bond issues. They are very complex. We greatly appreciate the support from the council in bringing forth this, these bond issues to allow us to do some very important infrastructure and other projects for the city. So I'll turn it over to Drew to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Janice. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Council and city staff. Uh, on page two, you'll see the general obligation, bond buyer general obligation index. If somebody can change. Is that me? Yep. Went too far. There we go. This is just like our Dow Jones and the stock market. This is one of the indices that we follow in the bond market. You can see that we're at near, uh, near-term lows on long-term municipal rates. Uh, they have ticked up a little bit in the last couple of weeks, a little bit more today, uh, while, while I was driving here. But, uh, still incredibly low interest rates. This is a picture of our certificates of obligation issued, uh, roughly a hundred, well, right at a hundred million right now, um, but based on the latest estimate, with an all-in true interest cost of two-point-three-eight percent, up about seventeen basis points from, uh, when we met in November. Mostly in the last two weeks. Basically, the seven percent inflation rates that we've been seeing have caused the bond markets to go up in rate as, um, essentially, everybody in the market is expecting the Fed to start moving on the short end and long-term rates are already beginning to reflect those increases. Uh, you, you can see the projects haven't changed from what we discussed back in November. Just the only difference is the interest rates. This is the refunding component, refinancing, up about eleven percent, eleven basis points or point-one-one percent. The savings are still, uh, still very strong, two-point-eight million compared to three million, uh, in November, two-point-five million on a present value basis. And, uh, about nine percent of the refunded bond amount. What you're approving, uh, this evening is, um, an ordinance that includes various parameters that delegates to the pricing officer the, uh, ability to receive the competitive bids and award them so long as they fit within these parameters on this, this page, summarized on this page. Basically, that we will not exceed a hundred and sixteen million in proceeds, that the maximum rate will not exceed any rate allowable by law. And then, uh, on the refunding, similar parameters with the bottom one added on there, that the net present value savings will be at least five percent. And as mentioned on the previous page, um, we're at nine percent currently. We do have a little cushion built into those rate assumptions. Our timeline, after hopefully approval of the ordinance tonight, we'll, we'll work through the rating process, um, basically next week and distribute the preliminary official statement in early February for a, a sale on February fifteenth and, uh, be able to report hopefully that evening on, um, the, the results of the sale, closing and funding and mid-March around the fifteenth. That's all we have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comments?
Just a couple of quick comments. Thanks for the presentation there. So the debt levels, the debt levels are a little bit higher than we normally have at a hundred and thirteen million, but I think there's a lot of capital improvement projects out there right now that we're trying to address. And there's a nice list of them on, on, uh, in the package and the supporting information of, of everything we're trying to address here. And that debt level is still within tolerance ranges on projected, uh, debt service coverage ratios, too, I believe. So I'm comfortable, uh, So I'm comfortable with this level, first of all. The execution here at two-point-three-eight, that's still not for sure, right? It could continue to go up. Have you ever hedged? I mean, this is out, what's the timing again? When is the?
It's March fifteenth, we'll lock the rates, a month.
Forty-five days out? Sixty days out? Have you ever, I mean, in a rising interest rate environment, have you ever tried to hedge this instrument?
It is possible to do that. It's very complex and risky, quite frankly. But we do have clients that pursue hedging strategies occasionally. Quite frankly, many municipalities had hedging strategies that blew up on them in two thousand and eight. And so our industry is largely backed away from derivatives and hedging through swaps and that sort of thing. We do have the technical capability to do it. The people that were around back then that know how to do it are still here. But we just really have almost no governmental clients that decide to do that.
Yeah, I don't disagree a hundred percent. Just to lock in a lower interest rate for sixty days, I don't know. If the instrument's out there, it'd be interesting to see what the price of it was. But I agree, we don't need to pursue it. I really liked the small one. I can't find my notes on this, but the smaller instrument of refiing twenty-eight million dollars' worth of existing bonds, because the lockouts have been removed in this cycle, this debt cycle. And I think there's a savings on here somewhere. Is it? How much is it again?
In the upper-left hand. Well, you can see the actual savings, upper-right-hand side, annual savings are second column from the right. So a hundred-and-six thousand this year, then four-hundred-and-three thousand the next year, four-hundred thousand. And those savings are proportional to the amount of debt from each year being refinanced.
Yes, this to me is just a great deal, because we could sit here and just go ahead and pay that debt off. Or you, Janice, and your team and everybody here has ambitiously gone after and looked to see what we can refi that is at a currently higher rate, and we can refi it at this two-point-three-eight. I think it's two-and-a-half million of found money, basically, two-point-eight million of found money. So I'm very supportive of any time we can refi, which we do. And it's just savings to the taxpayers. I think that's all I had on this. It's great. It looks like the execution, even though it's raising a little bit, it's not terrible. Is it two-point-three-eight? Or even if it goes up another twenty-five or fifty basis points, it's still at record low.
We actually have twenty-five basis points built into these rates.
I noticed that.
Over last week. We gave up four of those today. But yeah, so hopefully we should be good.
I mean, this whole bond, a little bit higher than normal, is going to, again, as I said, to pay for infrastructure, a lot of infrastructure deferred maintenance that we've seen, and with road, bridges, water sewers, above-ground, below-ground. And I think this is all, we're matching the life of the debt with the life of the asset, which is a tannamout importance when you're looking at debt. And I like the approach and supportive of this facility.
Any comments, questions? Thank you for being here today, and thank you for our staff for diligently working through this. This is complicated stuff, but this strategy enables us to accomplish so many of our goals. And without the careful strategy of our staff and partnering with our full team here, yeah, we wouldn't be able to accomplish nearly what we are. So thank you to everybody for this effort, and I'm excited for us to move forward.
All right, Mayor and Council, our final work session of the afternoon is a discussion of the Advanced Meter Infrastructure Project and the city's launch of the My Waco Water Portal, including a timeline of events, how the system will work, communication plan. Pleased to invite Lisa Tyer, Director of Water Utility Services, to present this update. And as Council's aware, the project was awarded back in December of two thousand and seventeen. And while we've had a few bumps, delays in the project, we're glad to be nearing completion and the launch date. Particularly excited for you as a council and our residents to hear about the enhanced services we're going to have available in the My Waco Water Portal. Lisa?
All right, good afternoon. So as City Manager Ford said, this has been a project, long time coming, one of the logins projects I've ever worked on in my entire career, anywhere, including banking. So, but there has been some bumps along the way, but I'm really excited at the place we've landed to and what I'm able to present to you today. So Advanced Metering Infrastructure, we call it A M I. We are nearing completion of the meter replacement part of this. So we either replaced a meter or we retrofitted a meter so that it could do A M I. And right now, we have less than four hundred meters. These numbers are changing daily as more work is done. But we kind of have hit a point where there's a delay in getting one, one-and-a-half-inch, two-inch meters in for us to finish everything completely. So we decided we were going to go ahead and launch, and we'll just manually read those meters until we can get that supply in to get those done. We're nearing completion of all the installation of our connected grid routers. And the connected grid routers are the piece that communicates between the meter and the office. So the office can send out a signal. They can get in reading from every meter in the city of Waco immediately, pretty much, that has responded to the grid. And those that don't, they can go back individually and try and get that read from that one meter without having to dispatch a truck. The other thing is when we do that, we're getting eight hours of reads. So the meters are reading every hour, twenty-four hours a day. So we're getting a lot more information and data than we ever have before. All twenty-meter reading cycles are being read right now via drive-by. That is the interim step to get it to where you can do the grid, the C G Rs, the connected grid routers. And our remaining item within this contract is the installation of leak-detection devices, which allow us to be able to hear leaks in certain size lines. So hopefully, we're able to be more proactive in repairing leaks before they actually have bubbled up into the street. And we have about five percent out of the ten thousand leak detectors that need to be installed. So there's quite a bit of that work left remaining to be done. The fixed network system will begin to come online throughout February. So there'll be what they call flipping endpoints, which just means they're bringing on, online, the A M I meters kind of systematically throughout the system, rather than trying to do it all at one time. And after that's done, we may have some areas where we're just not getting the reads we need, and we may need to add more of these connected grid routers to our system. So.
Lisa, a quick question. I just want to get context on nearing completion of meter replacement, less than four hundred. How many, what was the total population of meters?
So when we started this, it was about forty-six thousand, but now it's forty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight, I think. So we're nearing fifty thousand meters.
This is a giant project, so the fact that it's taken a little bit longer than we thought originally, I think.
It's a moving target.
Yes. It's great, thanks.
So we're really happy to announce, though, that we are going to bring the portal online. And this is our logo for that portal. It is My Waco Water. It looks very similar to the My Waco app, and that was done on purpose. We're looking for some continuity of the features that we're able to offer to our citizens. And so that when they see this shape with My Waco, they'll know that it's part of the city of Waco. So the My Waco Portal has a modular design. It's mobile-friendly. It is not an app, though. It is still software, but it is configured so it fits nicely on a mobile phone. And you can use a multitude of devices, Android, you know, it doesn't matter. It works on all of them. So I have a little short video, except for, there, I can see it.
Have you ever wondered how you can save money on your water bill? Identify and resolve leaks and protect your property from potentially costly water damage? Do you have a good handle on your water consumption? Do you know how much you use each month, where it goes, and what it costs? What if your water utility could offer specific suggestions on ways you can save money each month on your bill and exactly where you use water? What if you could choose to be alerted when your water use was really high? Or if there were a special rebate program just for you? Well, now you can have all that and more. Your utility has partnered with Water Smart Software to provide you with a customer water portal in which you can view your usage history, get money-saving recommendations, sign up for usage alerts, and much more. To register for free, just go to your utility's website and look for the Water Smart link. All you need is your account ID and zip code, and you'll be well on your way to becoming more Water Smart. Water Smart, intelligence beyond the meter.
Have you ever? Well, I'm not trying to do that. But so this is what the water portal screen will look like. The header will be different. They're currently working on putting our Water Smart logo up there. But when someone comes in to the portal, they will see this welcome screen. And so they can log in here, they can sign up, they can pay my bill without ever going to Waco Water, My Waco Water into the portal. And if they click on the water sewer service request, it automatically takes them back to the My Waco app, so that we're collecting any request in one site, not a part of this portal, but a part of the My Waco app. So when you click on sign up, it's really simple. They ask you for your email, and they send back a verification code. You put your verification code in, and the next screen will ask you for your account number, and it will ask you either for your house number or phone number. You can enter either one of those, and then it asks you to set up a password. And then it brings you back to this screen. And when you hit this screen, get to the screen, you hit login with your utility account. I set up an account today. It took thirty-five seconds to do it. This is the first screen you see. Then after that, on this screen, you can view, you can pay your bills. When you view a bill, it is the actual bill that you get in the mail. You can get how much usage you had yesterday, what was your usage yesterday? You can go to the I want to. And on the I want to, you can get enroll for auto-pay, understand your high bill, sign up for unusual usage, check for leaks, get the My Waco app, enroll in paperless billing, learn where you use the most water, learn about your water quality, which will then route them back to our water quality report. And then you can add another user, and you can also get a water user schedule if we have one. So such if we were in the middle of a drought and we had to have people water every other day, they could go, they could hit that and go directly to that schedule and know when they're allowed to water. As far as notifications, you can get ways to get better water results, enroll in different alerts, new data available, shortcut to the portal, and getting help understanding why your bill is so high. This is the payment screen. You can pay by credit card or checking account. You can pay your entire balance, your past due only, or you can pay a custom amount. You can also view your bill here. You can see your payments that have been applied, and you click View Bill, and it brings up your bill. This screen allows the customer to determine what type of communication they want and what their preference is, how they want to be communicated with. So they can choose that they want to be notified when their usage is three times more than what it normally is for that time of year. And they can choose whether they want to email, text, or voice. The same thing with utility connect messages. These are just general messages, either regarding their account or utility announcements. They can also choose what method of communication they want for that. They don't even have to be the same communication. And then we have the urgent notices, which to me is the most important part of this. So if somebody's enrolled in this, and we have a boiled-water notice, which has happened periodically, we can either email them, text them, or give them a voice message, but it goes directly to them rather than they have to hope they catch it in the newspaper or on the news that night. They would personally automatically know as soon as we have to issue that notice. And then they can also unsubscribe from everything except for the non-urgent notices. And we're able to go in and actually take a street if we want to and only send information to that one block, that one street of users who have signed up for the portal. So that's one of the big deals to me, is if you sign up for this, we're able to tell you when there's an issue happening to your water service, not the whole city's. There's also a number of videos that people can get to, have access to, that can help them save water. It will show them how to repair a toilet, you know, how much water should you really be putting on your grass? And so these are just a click away for consumers, and they go straight to that video. There are also graphs on this that people can use to help chart what their previous year was compared to their current year, what their annual usage has been over a number of years, and also kind of an estimate of where their water use is occurring. For our staff, there is an administrative console, so they can go in and see the same information that the customers are seeing and be able to have that conversation with the customer. And so I think that will assist them in helping customers either answer their questions or assist with the conflict. Maybe we have a conflict of what's going on, and people don't understand. This gives, we're looking at the same information at the same time, rather than trying to hope we all are communicating and looking at that information. So we have quite an aggressive timeline, and one of the reasons we have this aggressive timeline is because we must get off our current payment portal by the end of March. So we have already secured the My Waco Water URL. We've obviously done the logo. Starting tomorrow, we will be emailing and voicemailing all recurring credit card payments, customers that pay via that method. And January thirty-first will be our last day when our bill will generate credit card PIN. And so right now, our current billing system, when we bill, if you have a recurring credit card, the way, if you pay via recurring credit card, if you have that set up, the way that's identified is there's something when you bill that marks that you're one of those customers. And so we have to set a time period when we're not doing that so we can get them off of that recurring payment system on the old recurring payment system. So we have, so on January thirty-first, that would be our last day for that. And then February first, we would go, A M I meters will begin to come online. The recurring credit cards is suspended and clicked together. February first through fourth, we'll be starting to send out postcards or a letter, and I think it'll be a postcard to all customers. February fifteenth, customers can sign up for recurring credit cards again or make an online payment on My Waco Water. And March first is really our official launch of the portal. I believe the next, you'll see a chart, because I know you all like charts, of all our different communication methods. And it really is fairly aggressive. I mean, we're ordering promotional items to give away at our community meetings. We're updating our website, we're mailing the postcard. We've got a message on the outside envelope of our water bill that says, you know, you need to look at the information inside, because our online payment system is changing. We have a message on the water bill. We have a message on an insert in the water bill. And then we'll have promo posts on social media. And then, again, we'll continue to update the Waco Water site with more information and more how-to information. The company Water Smart, which is the My Waco Water, we're using their payment, their portal, they will automatically send out a letter to every customer we have, just welcoming them to the portal. And then March first, we'll go live. We'll have information and promotion in the city newsletter. We'll continue to monitor registration numbers and continue communication, because again, this is an opt-in system, so it's not an opt-out system. So we really need to get people wanting to sign up for this and to do it, because we think it's a big benefit to them. And then we'll attend to all the Neighborhood Association meetings in March and April to give them a firsthand information.
So this is a system that is a benefit, obviously, to our residents. So, this is a system that is a benefit, obviously, to our residents. For those that are in love with writing old-school personal checks and mailing those in, will they have that opportunity once the portal is live and launched?
They could do it if they have some means of getting on the internet, I guess I would say. It's, it's very difficult to use if you're not active on either a mobile phone or a computer.
Okay. I mean, will, like, will they still get a bill in the mail?
Yes, nothing else will change. They will just have, this is just an opportunity for people. They will still get a bill when we do something like a boil water notice, we still have to do all the, the other communication methods that we've had to do in the past. This is just a benefit to people who want to know immediately that information.
And Lisa, can I clarify something? What I hear you saying is that everything that currently exists will continue to be as it is, including paper bills, mailing checks, and all that. When you said it would be difficult for people if they didn't have a phone, or if they didn't have a computer or utilize the internet, you were talking about utilizing the portal and mailing in a check.
Right.
But everyone who wants to get a paper bill still, everyone who wants to mail in a check still, will be able to do that as always, correct?
None of that has changed, and we still have the IVR that also takes payments if they just call us.
Call, yeah. So, everything that exists right now will be the same. This will just be an additional tool on top of that. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, and I think the big deal with this thing is, one, is the communication that we're able to send back out to people, and the fact that, that we have the ability, whether or not they use the portal, we still have the ability to look at, let's, let's say we want to check for leaks throughout the city at, from 2:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the morning. We can run up a report, and we can still contact all those customers who have usage at a, at an odd time, and say, we think you may have a water leak. It doesn't matter whether you're using this portal or not, we'll still be able to do that for them. So, there, there are benefits to the whole program for, I think, everybody in the city. But those who are, who sign up for the portal, I think there's a bigger benefit for them.
The only disruption, it seems like, in people's current payment would be if you have a recurring credit card payment, that's the only thing that will be reset. But like, for example, I pay my bills through my bank's online bill pay, you know, I enter in the amounts, and sometimes it's a funds transfer, and sometimes what ends up happening is they literally write a check and mail it to the addresses, as opposed to me doing it. I don't know what happens with the city of Waco, but will, will our residents be able to do that as well if they're not paying credit card recurring, but they're doing it other ways like that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will still come in the same way it does right now.
Okay.
And that will, will not be affected, bank draft is, will not be affected. It is really, as you said, the recurring credit cards. The people who like to pay just a single time online, who aren't set up for reoccurring, they may see a day or two when that online portal is down as we switch over, but it's, it's going to be pretty quick. And the other thing that nobody asked is it is in Spanish as well as English.
Lisa, how you know that's not what I was about to ask?
The, the portal, on, on one of the pages, it says English at top. If you hit that, it comes down, and you pick Spanish, and it says Spanish at the top then. So, it is available, isn't it?
Hey, Lisa? I, I understand, this is a really, really...
I'm trying to see where you are, sorry.
You were trying to figure out where I was?
Yes.
She's in the clouds.
I'm in the proverbial iCloud. So, this information is great. One of the things I wanted to ask, and I think it's in line kind of with Mayor Potomac Boarderood's comments about, and, and Mayor, for the record, whether or not you have this app, the, the things that the app does is still available to you. Because, you know, there are many people who don't have computers and are not tech-savvy. But, for instance, the thing that, that kind of, you know, caused me pause, and I wanted to make sure and verify, is that if I'm having odd hour usage, or, you know, there's, there's some inaccuracies or whatever, or, or things that raise flags for you all in your system that you see, if I'm not signed up for the program, how, what, is that, is that then on me, the resident, to, you know, come to you and say, hey, this bill is like this? And then you go and do the investigation, and then you'll be able to see and inform from that way?
I think that's a yes and a no. And by that, I mean...
Okay.
We will be running reports periodically and checking for that usage at odd times when we don't think that it should be there, and reaching out to people. But at the same time, we, there may be those that we miss, maybe we don't run the report for two months, and, and now you've got a high bill, but we can go back out and figure out when it started. The other thing that I really like about this system is there are times people are away on vacation, and we don't know why there's all this usage, but there's usage. And it will, actually, we'll be able to pinpoint at this hour on this day, this is what we're seeing. We don't know what it is either, but this is what we're seeing. And so, I think that, that helps the customer, but it also helps the staff too, because when we're reading once every 30 days, I don't know what happens to your water from, you know, in between. I know what it looks like, but I can't tell you where your water went. Well, this gives us a better idea, a pinpoint, did a sprinkler system, you have a sprinkler system set for once a week, and you just kind of forgot to turn it off. Is that what happened? Your sprinkler system came on and, or does it look like you have a toilet leak, and it's just coming on periodically while you're on vacation? And this is what, we'll be able to help with those things now. And so, it's just a great tool, I think, for, for the citizens. But even if you don't sign up with the portal, we will be able to have access to that information. It just means you won't have access, you may not have direct access to that information, but staff will. And eventually, somewhere down the months, when we figure out how many meter staff we still need, we would like to convert one of those to like a field customer service rep, so the person, you'd make an appointment, he'd go out to your house, or she would go out to your house and sit down with you and maybe show you that information.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
And you said all but, is it all but 400 total meters are in AMI now, so that essentially, functionally, that's probably something 99% or, I mean, you're, you're near completion there?
Yeah.
On the ability to do that with every residence?
Yeah, we're down to 395 meters, that was the number this morning, that haven't been changed out. We think we'll get another 100 and something done before we go live, but, but we're, we still have that group, we just don't have a date when those meters are even going to be shipped to us. And it's been months, so...
Supply chain issue now for the remaining. And is this both commercial and residential property?
It, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
One quick comment, or maybe a couple. The transition here that you're doing is great. I mean, the, any time you do a system conversion, it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and it's not the easiest thing in the world, but where you're staying ahead of the issues and communicating, I think, is the key, and reacting to, to the feedback you get along this, along this Gantt chart. I like the idea of Water Smart sending out that welcome letter too. I mean, it seems like we're almost overdoing it on the notices, but when you have this kind of transition, I don't think there is an overdoing it. People, people just need to know, and this is such an improved product that we're, that we are offering here, under your leadership, I appreciate it. When we talk about, just one quick question, when we talk about subscription, that's, there's not a cost to do, this is all part of the service that we're providing to the citizens.
Correct.
Good, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, when we went out for the AMI contract, we specifically said they had to bring us a portal.
Great, looks, looks fantastic. Appreciate it.
All right. Anything else?
I just think it's great. It brings us to the 21st century. I'm thinking about in the winter storm, if we would have had access to this information, or our residents would have had accents, access to this information, how beneficial and helpful it would have been. So, whether it's an emergency or just a, a day-to-day event like paying your water bill, it's going to be a great tool. I'm, I'm glad that our water department, I think, since I've been around, has been so helpful and so great at working with our residents, and I think adding another tool to the toolkit is going to be really helpful. So, really appreciative of all this work that kind of brings us into the, I was going to say brings us into the 21st century, but I think it's cutting-edge, and it's really going to be meaningful to our residents. So, thanks for all the work.
Mayor, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one question. You know, the freeze that we had here the past few days, I would not have remembered to leave my water dripping and open my cabinet doors, had my daughter not called and reminded me to do that. Do, would this portal help some of our residents to remind them to, to prevent a pipe broke at you by doing these things? Do we do, will we be able to do that?
Yes, we can send out a message to anybody who has signed up. So, even if you don't have a computer at home, but you want to be signed up on this, because maybe you have a cellphone, or maybe you want us just to call you. I mean, when we say we can call you, I mean, our system will call you and leave you a message. So, we, we want for anyone to sign up for it, because we will still have that ability to reach out to you. We could have sent out notices on where to get bottled water, we could have told people, your block is under a boiled water notice, but, you know, the next block, everybody else around isn't. There are so much, so many ways for us to communicate with people with this, and communicate in the method that they want. So, I think that's, that's a big deal.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right.
It's really great information. City Manager Ford, is that all of our work sessions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Are there any requests for future gen items? If not, I wanted to say one thing really quick. I wanted to thank Janice, we, Janice, I didn't tell you how, I wanted to congratulate you for your retirement that Bradley mentioned, and just be, just so thankful for your work here, it's so meaningful to us. And I let that last work session end without me saying that, so sad that it might be the last one that you're presenting to us, and how much it means to us, and know that we're going to have an opportunity to celebrate you and give you some more warm words in the future, because we'll be seeing you again, but I just wanted to acknowledge that and missed that a minute ago. Yes, ma'am. All right, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session, as read into the record by our interim city secretary, at 4:25 PM.
Notice this hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provision. Attorney briefing under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, C T W P versus City of Waco and the Texas Document Solutions, Inc., calls number 2017-3559-4, pending in the 170 Judicial Court, District Court, calls number 07-21-00280-CV, pending in the Court of Appeals in the 7th District of Texas. Number two, real property under Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and number three, economic development under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are in executive session.